Commissioners, I'd like to introduce to you tonight our new Community Development Director, Executive Director of Community Development Agency. His name is Stephen Mendoza. He comes to us, work-wise, he comes to us from the city of Los Alaminos, but he has been a longtime resident of the city of Santa Ana, West Floral Park neighborhood. So, please welcome our new Director, Stephen Mendoza, of the Community Development Agency.
Would you like to say something, Steve?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right. Man a few words, all right. Good, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. First item I'd like to cover is the minutes of the May 11th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's six zero with one absence, Mendoza. Next item, would like to have a motion on the absent, approved absentee of Beatrice Mendoza?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second is Lynette. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Six zero, one absence. Move on to public comments. Does anybody of the public have any public comments on non-agenda items? You may fill out a request and speak with the Secretary. You may fill out a request form with the Secretary and you'll have three minutes to speak. I have two cards tonight. The first one is Dale Helvick.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. You might know that Sun Point Development down in Laguna de Gal, they disapproved that project because it was going to put sixty homes on nineteen acres of land. So they went ahead and said, okay, you can go ahead and evaluate thirty-five, essentially three dwelling units per acre. City Council of Orange tomorrow night is going to be looking at the townhomes on Town and Country Drive, which is essentially due east of Main Place Mall. Six hundred and fifty-three apartments, seventy-four townhomes. You know, you have wide spectrum of dwelling units per acre and your job is difficult, to say the least, when you have data points like that out there in the county of Orange. And I just wonder why the developer, for twenty-five, twenty-five, thinks eighty-four dwelling units per acre is an acceptable use of the land. North Santa Ana Preservation Alliance is not against development. It's for responsible development. I think we see other communities exercising responsible development. It's not affordable housing, so it's not categorized into that issue as far as alleviating problems within Santa Ana. It is high density, which is just exacerbating the issue of high density in Santa Ana. So I hope when the time comes for you guys to take a look at this project, you also exercise responsible usage of your power and responsible use of the land that Santa Ana has very little left of for open development, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dale. The next person I have is Hector Diaz.
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, everybody. And my point is coming from about the other thing for...
Could you pull the mic around a little closer to you?
Okay. This is for other point for, I send my boss, this is for the Planning Community Commission for the city of Santana. In a hot public hearing and consider conditional use permit, two thousand eighteen eleven and two thousand eighteen twelve, and along with seller of alcoholic beverage for off permits for...
Are you talking about a specific item? All right, I was told that you...
Yeah, the first time.
Yeah, I was told that you, yeah, unfortunately I was told. Okay, thank you. All right. Sorry about the confusion. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to make a public comment at this moment on a non-agendized item? Hearing none, we'll move on to the business calendar. Please be advised that the action of the Planning Commission shall become effective on the day following their, the first regularly scheduled city council meeting after the ten-day appeal period, unless, if allowed by the Santa Ana Municipal Code, an appeal to the city council is filed with the clerk of the council and a copy is sent to the planning department within ten days of the commission's action, or unless set forth, set for public hearing by the city council. An appeal from a decision or request or requirement of the Planning Commission may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. We will now move on and consider item number one, conditional use permit numbers two zero one eight dash eleven and two zero one eight dash twelve, to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on- and off-premise consumption at the La Bahia de Acapulco Restaurant and Market located at sixteen oh eight South Standard Avenue, Unit 101. Is there any, anything, any item that the Commissioner at this point in time would like to disclose as far as interaction? No? Okay.
Is it sixteen oh eight or sixteen oh six?
Sixteen oh six, sorry. Sixteen oh six. All right. Jerry?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As previously stated, this is an application on behalf of La Bahia de Acapulco Restaurant to allow the off-sale and off-sale consumption of beer and wine at this location at sixteen oh six South Standard Avenue, Unit A. So in terms of the project description, just I'll go ahead and give you a bit of a background. So this particular establishment has been operating as a market since nineteen eighty-eight. At that time, the city did not require conditional use permits, so they've been selling alcohol for off-sale purposes since the eighties, or nineteen eighty-eight. The property, or the business owner of La Bahia purchased the property in two thousand and eleven and the ownership of the license was transferred to her name. At this time, the applicant did request a conditional use permit, which is CUP number eighteen dash two, to allow the on-premise consumption of beer and wine. So as the review process for this application, staff made an analysis and determined that in order for CUP number twelve, or two thousand and eighteen number twelve, to be approved, the site needs to be brought into conformance, hence why there is an application for two CUPs. So we're going ahead and legalizing the non-conforming use, which is the type twenty alcohol license, and now they're introducing the type forty-one. So it's to allow off-sale and off-sale. So this is an aerial view of the subject site. The outer line indicates the project site and then the lower rectangle shape indicates the unit. It's located at the southwest corner of Edinger and Standard Avenue. Right across from the premises, you also have Madison Park, and then the other corners are underutilized properties, mostly for commercial purposes. This is a floor plan of the existing establishment. Just to give you a quick background as well, in two thousand and seventeen, the applicant submitted an improvement plans to allow for the restaurant component. So this is somewhat of a newer use that was added to this. Prior to that, this particular establishment was just serving as a market with the off-sale consumption. So again, as part of this application, now that they're proposing on sale, we're basically trying to legalize those two uses. This is a sight photo of the establishment. So again, just to recap, we have a legal non-conforming use that we're trying to now legalize through the approval of the CUP and introduce the new on-sale premises consumption, which also requires a CUP. Through our analysis, it was determined that currently the use does not create any nuisance and the addition of an additional off-sale license would not create a nuisance to the surrounding vicinity. And with that, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit number two thousand and eighteen dash eleven and two thousand and eighteen dash twelve as condition. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant, Joel Rodriguez, as well as the business owner, Ms. Ruttala, are here to answer any operational questions.
Does the Commissioner have any questions of staff? Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions. First, that site, within two hundred feet, there's multiple ABC licenses there, from a twenty and twenty-one, a forty-two and a forty-eight. And in the staff report, it said that the establishment is located in the fourth highest crime precinct or grid within the system of the police grids. So my question for you is, I know typically when you're analyzing an application, you're looking at the census tract where it's located, but given the concentration around there, has, have you had any conversations with PD as to what, I guess, the area, are there impacts from the alcohol in that immediate area?
So I did prepare a map for that particular question. So as part of any ABC license application, the plea does review these applications and they look at the number of crimes at this particular grid. And as Bill McGovern has mentioned at past PC meetings, our crime data doesn't really reflect where the crime took place, and there's not really much data to make a correlation between the number of alcohol licenses and crime. Unfortunately, Bill McGovern is not in today and he's the expert that we rely, but again, they had no issues with this particular application. And then just going back to the question with regards to census tract, this particular business is located within census tract seven forty-five point zero two. Per ABC's requirements, three off-sale alcohol licenses are allowed, and there's currently two, including the existing off-sale alcohol license for La Bahia. And then just adjacent to that, we have census tract seven forty-four point zero three, and that is technically over-concentrated per ABC's requirement. They allow a total of three off-sale establishments, and there's currently seven. So just in close proximity, there are five licenses, as indicated by the diagram. So just to go over with you, so the first dot represents twelve fourteen Pomona Street, and that is an existing restaurant. The second one, it is a, again, a legal non-conforming bar with a type forty-two. We no longer allow those type of uses. Number three is a liquor store that's been operating there as well since the eighties. Number four is a banquet facility that has a type forty-eight alcohol license that the city also doesn't allow. And then number five is also an existing market that has beer and wine for off-sale premises.
Okay. Now, thank you for showing that to everybody, because I think it's important to know that, yes, it's a legally non-conforming, only based on the approval they got. It's not like some folks that have come before the commission where they were just operating without it. I mean, they...
Correct.
They operated under the correct permit at the time.
Right, and again, they could continue to operate as is, but since they came forward and are requesting this additional on-premise license, therefore that is why we're requesting that two CUPs be approved.
Okay, and then my last question is, within our, the draft resolution, is there a condition that would limit their ability to have folks drink outside the premises?
Correct. So I did find a typo in our resolution, I could take you to the conditions now. So these are the conditions of approval that were reflected on the resolution. And the first condition should be revised to include on-sale and off-sale establishments. So the San Antonio Municipal Code currently under section forty-one dash one nine six G already has regulations in terms of onsite consumption or display of windows. So all of that is currently already codified, therefore we didn't include that on your staff report. But yes, we do have language that prohibits the consumption of alcohol off-premise within the general vicinity.
And the reason I bring that up is just because, you know, it's a nice establishment in the sense that you can go in, order something, and consume onsite, or, you know, take something home, which is fine. I just want to make sure, because it doesn't really have enough room to, say, have a patio or some sort of place that would be a natural gathering spot.
Correct. Right, and then this is something that the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control also regulates, so as soon as you exit the premises, all containers need to be sealed.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Lynette?
Jerry, where else do we, do we have, does this occur in the city? It looks like, like a market and a restaurant.
Correct. It's not too common, just because two ABC licenses could be an expense for some businesses. But I know that Mother's Market in Costa Mesa has this type of combination use. If you're familiar with the Argentinian restaurant, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the name, Bristol and Seventeen, they have, they have the same dual combination.
And then, and secondly, so it looks like from the picture, there's just only two racks of food goods. Could, could they potentially get rid of those and just be, and just have liquor sales and restaurant? Because to me, then it would become a liquor store.
Right, so as mentioned prior...
How do we keep that market component stayed? How do we keep the market there without it turning into a liquor store?
Correct. So prior to this, it was obviously serving as a mini-market, but the owner has kind of shifted in terms of operations and they're trying to utilize more of a restaurant approach. But again, ABC, the Department of ABC would also regulate the sale of off-premise locations to a certain percentage. There's always that key percentage that they need to maintain below.
How's ABC regulating that? How are they policing that? They're not. So we have to do a weekend to make sure that...
Not too familiar with their process, but I know there's some involvement with like receipts and reports being turned into ABC. Maybe the applicant is more familiar than I am with regards to that.
It just looks, it looks like the, from the diagram, and you could tell me if I'm wrong, that the alcohol display is a larger area for the market than the actual food sales display. Is that correct?
Correct. It looks that way, but again, there, I mean, I don't have a pointer with me, but they do have two rows that run parallel to that red diagram that are displays for other types of food, correct?
But, but the, but the alcohol displays are greater in footage than the actual food displays?
It could seem that way, and just to give you, or just to clarify, normally when we're looking at ABC licenses, they need to have five percent or less of display area, and they're pretty much compliant with that requirement.
So how, what do we have to do at our level to make sure that the market component...
We could add conditions, and there is a condition, I believe, that refers to the approved plans.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Jerry.
Yeah, we could always add a condition if you like, with regards to that.
Does anybody else have any questions of staff? Thanks, Jerry. Would the applicant like to comment at this time?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. To answer your question, Commissioner Verino, that particular market conscious has been iconic in that neighborhood. People rely on it in terms of going down there and get, you know, last-minute items, such as any type of grocery items that they have. One of the things that, that came up in conversation with the owners initially was, okay, it's not going to be a liquor store conscious, you know? The one thing that the residents really appreciate in that era is just having a convenient market. When the, the whole idea of converting it from a takeout, again, it was, it was a request by the residents, by their clients, saying, well, can we eat here? They said, well, no, based on our conditions, you're not allowed to, but forthcoming. Thus came the idea of creating a sit-down restaurant. I frequented that place for the last year. Number one, the food's incredible, the cooks are amazing, and it's native to Acapulco, it's got more of a diverse type of a menu, if you will, so a lot of people flock to that. The market component is going to stay. That's, that's one of their primary attractions to that area, because it's so convenient.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Okay. We will now open the public hearings. I have one card, and that is Hector Diaz. Would you like to speak at this time?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and, good afternoon. And coming from my boss, my boss is from La Paloma Market, his neighbor to the La Bahia, La Bahia Market, is, I come in for opposite for this plan for sell beer out inside the, this store, because it's a little bit problem for the other business, the other liquors, especially in La Paloma Market. And my other neighbor is Los Cristales, is a bar, is a bar, is sell beer inside the bar. But my boss say, please, just go on there and communication, this is opposite for this plan, because it's a, all the time, this store is for long time, maybe thirty-five years, this store is a, is mini-market, is no Acapulco, is no Bahia, is other, other name, but it's mini-market only, but I never sell beer inside the market. This is only coming for, tell, it's opposite for, give a permit for sell beer inside the business. Okay, that's it only. I don't know, you have some question?
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Does anyone else from the public wish to speak on item number one? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission. Do we have a motion to consider item number one? Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, before we get into a motion, I just, my questions were really based on the fact that, without even seeing the staff report, I know that area has plenty of alcohol outlets. And so, when we read the staff report, or when I read it and I saw, it's like right on the line there, it just, it makes it, you know, difficult to really kind of, you know, separate it out, because of the way it's set up in that vicinity, but I would just ask staff in the future to really kind of take a wholesale approach. I understand, again, ABC standards are what they are, and you follow the ABC standard, so I appreciate that. It's an existing market, I don't have a problem with it, per se, I'm not pointing it out or trying to say that there's an issue with that. I think it's just, for that community, there's quite a bit of alcohol outlets in that area, and I, you know, I don't feel that if a business is operating fine and all they're doing is getting up to code with their permits, I mean, I have no problem with that. In fact, I'd actually go ahead and make, or be willing to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt resolutions approving CUPs, numbers two thousand and eighteen dash eleven and two thousand and eighteen dash twelve, with the condition that we, for the market, that we, as city, not ABC, but as the city, that we require an annual report as to receipts compared to alcohol sales and food.
For the market only, or for both uses?
For, for both, actually, for the market and the restaurant. I know that typically for the restaurants, we have some sort of condition that mimics the ABC requirements. I'd like us to go ahead and do that, because it sounds like there's concerns from my colleagues in regards to the market use disappearing. Obviously, the owners don't seem to have that concern, but I think the CUP is more of concern for potentially future owners further down the road.
Katie, do we have a second on that motion?
I could listen to his motion.
Go ahead.
So I agree with you, but what do we do then with that information? Let's say...
You know, good point. So actually, the condition should reflect that the applicant shall have receipts showing more sales on the market side than alcohol side, and that should be shown to us, and if they're not shown...
Do we do that?
Well, they do that for restaurants. Restaurants require that as well. Now, whether all restaurants actually meet that requirement, that is something, I mean, I'm open to something, but I think we should have something that kind of keeps them on the straight and narrow as far as operating as a market and not a liquor store, but I'm open to suggestions.
I agree, because I don't like the fact that...
Whoa, hang on. Yeah, I think it's a good idea, but I'm wondering if we're, it's a replication in the place, if that's what we're trying to do by the standard, and then if it's one percent off or two percent off, where do we go from there? Right.
One of the things that we could do is we could come back with a report every year, with the annual report, and present it to you, and then you could consider what you wanted to do with that information.
Well, I don't think that addresses the Vice Chair's concern as far as, okay, we got a report, now what? I think what we're trying to figure out is the now what portion.
Right, but then, then we could agendize it such that you would then discuss the report and provide us with direction. So we would give you a report that said what the sales were, and we would also talk about crime in the area, or any other, other information that you are willing to, that you would like us to bring back to you. And then you could do what, you could initiate additional findings, you could, you know, you could have it agendized and then add a public hearing, add additional findings, but that way you would have the information you needed to have to either add additional conditions or, or just be comfortable with its operation.
I mean, guys, I'd be comfortable with the idea of us receiving a report and having us or the Commission at the time determine the path they want to choose, but I leave that up to you guys.
Yeah, I, my comment is that I don't think we can sit here and say, you have to have more receipts from the restaurant versus more receipts from the market or more receipts from, I don't think, I mean, I think the concern is that both entities exist under one roof and that they both are, they are both revenue generating entities. That's what I say.
But we do that, we do that for restaurants. We say that the restaurant has to sell more food than they sell alcohol. So now we have, now we have the market and the restaurant on the same site, and how, I, I'm, I'm, too, want to ensure that the market is selling more goods than it's selling alcohol, and the restaurant is selling more food than it is alcohol. So this has not become the go-to liquor store slash bar in that part of town, because I have the same concerns. It is a high-crime area, and I, and I know one of the reasons we want to do this is we want to get them more compliance, and so I don't want to deny what they're asking, but I don't want down the road, I don't want down the road, know that we made a decision that we didn't condition so that we could keep it as a market selling goods, and if somebody comes in and while they're buying their groceries, they pick up, you know, some beer or a bottle of wine, and on the restaurant, that they're not just coming in to have drinks, they're actually buying food and, and having drinks with their dinner. I mean, I just want to make sure that we, we're doing what we can in this body to ensure that those stay there, especially because we have a responsibility to that community, which is a very high-crime area. And, and that's all I'm going to, so however we need to condition that, I'd be comfortable and on board, but I want to make sure that, that if it has to be two separate things, one for the restaurant or one for the market, if we can do that.
Well, then let me just suggest, you know, state your conditions, state the conditions you'd like to hear, and then I'd like to hear from a legal standpoint if we can even follow those conditions.
May I have a question?
Go ahead.
My feeling, what is, we should have some kind of a limit, we just cannot give a blank, well, you have a, give a report, but, but we should have like, well, okay, reporting indicated percentage of alcohol sales were sold versus regular grocery, or percentage of alcohol sold versus regular food serve at the restaurant. We just cannot say, well, you know, they'll bring back us a report annually, then what? What type of report, what are we looking for?
Well, Commissioner, when I think, what we're trying to kind of work our way through here is that typically with the restaurants, when they get a conditional use permit, the gross receipts for food have to be larger than the gross receipts for alcohol. So that kind of ends up being the metric to which the report would come back favorable. So if we were to apply the same standard to the application in front of us, we would ask them to provide a report annually that shows gross receipts for non-alcoholic items, you know, it could be food, it could be cleaning, whatever they sell, depending on what's being sold versus the alcohol sales. So that would be the metric, and then when it's brought to the Commission, as staff is recommending, then the Commission at that time can determine... to the commission, as staff is recommending, then the commission at that time can determine if they feel they need to act either with more conditions, less conditions, or some other action.
Well, we, we should set what the limitation we're looking for. Which is, well, percentage of my, of these, alcohol should not be greater than 50% of total cell revenue, or something like that.
Right.
Otherwise, it's just general.
Well, I, I know Commissioner Verino wants to ask staff about some conditions, but I would, my recommendation would be that the non-alcoholic items, the gross receipts for the non-alcoholic items is greater than alcohol receipts. That, that would be the metric. So you would have to sell more non-alcoholic items than alcohol, which, given that they're a market and a restaurant, I don't think that would be a problem. Again, this is not about punishing them or saying that they're a bad operator. We're just here, as Commissioner Verino is saying, is here we've got a bite at the apple. I mean, the last time they came in for a permit of this nature was back in the eighties. So here we are today. Here's a responsible operator, and we just want to ensure that they continue to operate responsibly. So I think, did you want to...
You know what? At first, I didn't think that that was a good idea, because I didn't want to put something stringent on the operator. But the reality is, is that they're selling food, prepared food, and then unprepared food and whatever else is in the market. I know sales make up a huge part of a lot of restaurants' receipts. But if that's the case, then, then it has become effectively a liquor store. If it's 51% of, of total receipts, that sounds to me like that's what it's become at that point. So we could word it as Phil word it, however we word it, I think 51 or greater than would be fine with me.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table today.
Well, I think I should probably restate the motion since we've kind of batted it around a little bit.
Yeah, there was no second.
And read it all back to us, please. So no, in all seriousness, I would like to make a motion that we adopt resolutions approving CUPs number 2018-11 and 2018-12 with the additional condition that the applicant provides us annually, provides the city to be presented to the planning commission annually, a report that shows the, that shows the gross receipt sales for alcohol versus non-alcoholic items. And a favorable report would indicate more non-alcoholic items sold than alcoholic items sold. I know it's a wordy one, but...
Do we want those receipts to be...
Is that combined?
Yeah, combined for both restaurant and market, or separated?
I, I think separate for each entity.
I'll second that.
So two reports essentially.
Okay, you'll second that?
Yeah.
And without any changes or anything like that? Just ask how with the conditions?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Lisa, we okay with that from the standpoint of the conditions?
I believe that some of those standards are required by ABC as well for operational standards. So I think that it should be okay.
It sounds to be more consistent with ABC at this point in time than anything else.
All right.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. We'll have a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero with one absence. Beatrice Mendoza. Thank you. Candy? Do you want to do the introduction here?
Yes, I do. Tonight, I would like to introduce you to one of our newest interns. Her name is Heidi Hasinto. She's been working with us for about six months?
Eight.
Yeah, at least. And, but she only, she works part-time with us because she is a full-time code enforcement officer at the city of Costa Mesa. But she's very interested in planning. She has a degree from UCI in social ecology, the concentration in urban, urban studies. So I welcome her and like to introduce you to her tonight. And she's going to give her first staff report to you.
Okay, well, let me get started here. And we'll say that we want to consider item number two, conditional use permit number 2018-06 to allow after-hours operation at the proposed IHOP restaurant located at 2407 South Bristol Street. Heidi, take it.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Before you, it's application CUP 2018-06 for IHOP located at 2407 South Bristol Street. As mentioned, this application is to operate 24 hours at IHOP. The CUP is required because the location is within 150 feet of residentially zoned or used property. This is an aerial of the site. It highlights the, the subject site. It is in a general commercial zone and surrounded by commercial uses. And this is a photo of the site. As you can see, it's currently undergoing tenant improvements. And this is a site plan that shows the subject site in relation to the other buildings. And this is the floor plan as proposed by the applicant. A little bit on the analysis. After-hours operation will provide additional hours of dining opportunity to the residents and the visitors. The surrounding parking lot and row of buildings will mitigate any potential impacts to the neighboring properties. The extended hours will also promote and create additional job opportunities to promote a balance of land uses in the vicinity. And the site also meets all San Antonio Code standards pertaining to eating establishments. With that, staff recommends approval of CUP 2018-06 as conditioned. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Heidi, thank you. Before I forget, does any commission have anything to identify? Okay, we'll leave it at that. Does anybody have a question or staff? Phil?
Well, first a comment. Good job on your report. My question's probably more towards you guys, and that is, so on condition number four, I, I appreciate what you guys are trying to accomplish there because you guys are essentially saying, hey, once IHOP's off and running, if they do decide to do like a patio or some sort of outdoor dining, that they wouldn't have to go through the process. But in my experience with other applications that's come before the commission, if you expand, I mean, the CUP applies to the current square footage today. If we're expanding the use, I, I just, I've seen other applications come before the commission where it's really just an expansion of the square footage of the use. So I, I just don't know if that condition is something we could even approve because it seems like that would be something that unfortunately for IHOP, once they got to the point where they could put a patio in, that they would have to come back for modification.
That would probably be staff's determination. I would think the only event that that would occur would perhaps be if they were not using it for actual eating, but perhaps for waiting or something like that. But yes, that is typically what we would do.
Okay, thank, yeah. So I, I mean, I'm comfortable with the project. I've just, condition number four does not strike me well. And I, if we went for it, I would want to strike that condition. But that's all I have.
Cynthia?
There's two things. One, that's a very busy, busy shopping center. And I know because I use it. And it is just horrible to get out of there onto Bristol. In terms of parking, if I'm going to IHOP, which I believe is going to be IHOP soon, is that going to affect, I just saw that actually in the news today, they're going to become an international house of breakfast instead of IHOP. So I don't know how that's going to affect. I was, the CEO of IHOP was on the news today, and I saw that. So are, they're going to be designated parking spots for the clientele? I mean, it is just so overpopulated with all the, the shopping center that is very popular and has a lot of, you know, shops that people actually need and go to. So how is that going to, are they gonna have designated spots for the IHOP? How is that gonna, or how many for that? I don't know.
So a parking analysis was conducted for a minor exception that was processed for the application, and it didn't reveal any concerns with parking. But if the applicant is here to answer any questions as far as if they have any plans for that.
And where, okay, yeah, I have some questions for them. And then my other question was, we have Denny's, like hop, skip, and a jump away from where this is. And it's also, I believe, 24 hours. Am I correct?
That, the, pardon me, the question, the application before you tonight is, oh, Denny's is also...
There's a Denny's within walking distance. It's super close.
It's 24 hours?
It's also 24 hours. Do we typically do that? Put restaurants so close to each other 24 hours? Is it, you know, Bristol, unfortunately, whether we like it or not, the reality is they're speeding. There's a lot of activity that, you know, we prefer not to have at night, late. So those are my concerns.
Okay. If the commission believes that having multiple 24-hour restaurants in close proximity to one another will create issues, that you should address that in your comments and potentially in your conditions or decision.
Well, do we have any other places that are that close to each other that are 24 hours?
I am not thinking of any except perhaps, no, not...
We used to have the IHOP and the Denny's relatively close to each other on 17th, near Grand.
Well, you got IHOP and you got Norm's.
You've got, oh, that's right. You have IHOPs on, and Norm's on 17th. That's right. And they're right next to each other.
There's an IHOP by, there's IHOP by Grand. Grand and 17th and Main is, is Norm's.
So yes.
Yes, the answer is they're close by.
So the applicant can address the parking?
Right. Let's, let's stay with staff at this point in time.
Oh, okay.
Eric?
I just want to note for the record that it's international house of burgers.
Oh, the burgers.
Thank you.
I got the B right.
Yes. Okay.
I like the breakfast. It's gonna be IHOP instead of IHOP.
Yes, so burger orders.
Heidi, any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Could you, staff, can you tell me how many parking spaces would be available to this particular establishment?
One second. So I believe in the parking analysis, they have 474 spaces provided. Throughout the, the shopping center.
That, that's a shopping center, right?
Yes.
So what the current, the ALCD code for the parking requirement for the restaurant now, that I believe has just recently changed, right? Eight parking spaces per thousand square foot, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Eight per, eight per thousand.
Yes. And so in the parking analysis, as required by the code, they should have 513, and only provided 474. But the analysis didn't reveal any conflicts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay.
Just, it's my understanding this has been a restaurant. So it's not an expanded use here, just so you're aware of that. It's a, it was a restaurant and will continue to be a restaurant.
Okay.
No expansion of use.
What restaurant was it?
IHOP.
It's going to 24 hours. But the impact is...
It was a bank before. It wasn't a restaurant. It was a bank.
Yeah, it was a cheese bank.
Correct.
Yeah, I lived right around the corner.
Yeah, that's why I was surprised to see IHOP. It's so kind of random. And it, it's just, the traffic is going to be hoarded.
How about we do this? Would the applicant like to speak at this point in time and maybe answer some of the questions that we have?
Mr. Chair, real quick, just on this whole parking thing for staff. So 513 are required, 474 are provided. And then it says that a minor exception for a parking reduction was approved. When was that approved?
But it's already completed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was, it was earlier this year. It was in conjunction with the IHOP. And it will, it's something that's a minor exception because it was less than 5%.
Thank you, Ivan, for the accuracy. Thank you.
So I, I just wanted, I just want to clarify that, so this application's for after-hours. So I don't think, unless we think 474 cars are gonna be there between midnight and 5:00 AM, I don't know if parking would be as big a concern as during the day, which is gonna happen anyways.
Bad is a burger.
Hi. Good evening. My name's John Dodson. I'm with R.M. Davis New Love Architects. I'm the architect for the project. I also have the owner, Dan Ashori, and Sean Ashori of the IHOP restaurant. With respect to the parking analysis, that's correct. We did go through a parking analysis, and the peak times for the restaurant versus the market are different. So that's how you can have less than the required parking. We're now, and we've been approved for that. So we're approved and permitted for that use. What we're now asking for is additional hours of operation beyond when there isn't a problem in the parking lot and the non-peak hours, and there also isn't a problem with traffic. So approval of the hours of operation would not really impact traffic at all. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Does anybody have a question for the applicant?
Will the name change affect your IHOP?
We are concerned, we have all the signs fabricated, and I brought that up to the client last Friday, and we're looking into that.
That's a temporary name during this promotion.
Oh, it's only in six weeks.
It's a marketing campaign.
It's a marketing.
It's a marketing.
Well, thanks for the suspense. You let these guys get all excited about burgers. Good job.
I was disappointed about the burger thing. So now I'm glad to know that.
Please go ahead and try the burgers. The most delicious burger in the country.
They put their IHOP hard for guaranteeing, you know...
We obviously won't have burgers at your place in six weeks. It'll already be over.
Wow. All that for six weeks. Okay.
It's all over the news.
Does anybody else have a question?
Well, obviously, the promotion's working. Everybody's talking about it. So good job.
You got three, you got three people that are willing to buy hamburgers at this point in time. Does, does any other, are there any other questions of the applicant at this time? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, have we received any written correspondence on this item?
We have not.
Pardon?
We have not.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. I have one card here. Dan Ashori?
Well, may I just, here's any questions?
Come on up to the front, please. Come up to the front.
I think you answered the most important one that everybody was talking about.
Yeah, with a verb. I know what that's about.
I think everybody's relaxed.
Do you have nothing, nothing more that you'd like to comment on? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment on item number two? Hearing none. We'll close the public, public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the commission. Do we have a motion to consider item number two? Phil?
Mr. Chair, yes. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and approve CUP number 2018-06 minus condition number four.
Second. Okay. Is there any discussion we will have at this point in time? Lynette?
I just want to say that I think it's gonna be a great addition to, to the area. I'm really excited to have IHOP. I was disappointed when they closed the one further down. So I'm excited.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. No further comments on this item? With that...
Do I have a second? Yeah.
We have a second.
We have a second. Yeah, yeah.
Eric was the second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero with Beatrice Mendoza absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
With that, we'll close the business calendar, and we'll bring it back to comments. Candy, do you have any staff comments at this time?
Yes. At your next meeting, we will be doing the workshop on the Brown Act. And we'll be looking not only at the standard workshop that we've talked about before, but we'll be also be looking at some new issues that have come up, which include how we use social media, because that is also an issue that needs to be addressed as part of the Brown Act. So we'll be looking forward to hearing that presentation from our attorney's office.
Thank you. Any other staff comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll go on to commissioner comments. Ken? Cynthia? Eric?
No comment.
Lynette?
Just a question. Is, is there a development, someone asked me recently if there was development in play or planned for the 17th and Lincoln over there with the medical building, the big medical building? It's a pretty big piece of property.
We do not have application in, on that.
We do not have application in, on that.
Okay, I think that's a rumor out there, and so I just, I thought I, I said I'd ask and find out if that was, if there was, so, thank you.
Okay, we do not have an application in.
Thank you.
Phil?
No comment.
Okay. We'll make this quick and easy. I have no comments at this point in time myself, so with that, we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hey, so, Mark, what's, what's Gina, what's Gina, was there a Gina?
Yeah.
What's going on, I hear a bunch of calls about her.
Oh, I'll tell you, I'll tell you, give me...